Okay, it's seven oh one, time to call this meeting to order. Everyone, please stand before.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the Constitution, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Taylor, if you'd please some time to be clear.
Your word. Over everyone who attended this meeting tonight, all of our citizens, all of our council members, ensure that we maintain focus on our task at hand, serving this city to the best of our abilities. In your son's name, we pray.
Amen.
Call Roman.
Mr. Command.
Here.
Mr. Taylor.
Here.
Mr. Childs.
Here.
Mr. Duncan.
Yeah.
Mr. Booth.
Here.
Just.
Here.
Okay, has any, everyone had a chance to review the minutes from last regular meeting in special meeting December sixth? Any council discussion on said minutes? Motion to adopt. So move. Okay.
Mr. Taylor.
Yes.
Mr. Childs.
Yes.
Mr. Duncan.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah. Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Command.
Yes.
All right, I need a motion to amend the agenda to add S. Sopec to the agenda for tonight. There'll be about fifteen minutes.
That I make business, that they're going to fall.
Yes, okay.
I'll move.
Second.
Mr. Childs.
Yes.
Mr. Duncan.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Mr. Booth.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Command.
Yes.
Mr. Taylor.
Yes.
Okay, citizens' comments? Everyone, if you would, when you get up there, would you please state your name and your address first, please?
Yes, my name is Pauline DeTingle. I live at seventy three East Franklin Street. Have a couple of things. First of all, I need to clear up a misconception. Apparently, some of you are under the impression that I'm related to a former member of this council. No, I am not. That apparently was posted on someone's Facebook page. I'm not related to current or past members of the city council, so I needed you to know that. I attended a meeting last week and had some questions which were not answered completely, and so I would like to get those questions answered tonight. They are about the fire chief and partly concerning the fact that he did not receive a raise at the time that others did. One of the questions I have is that during this last meeting, it was stated that employees were given evaluation on a regular basis. The, those who received a raise, were they given any evaluation?
Ma'am, citizens' comments actually not question and answer. It's just where you can comment on things.
I'm commenting on the fact that I need to know if that is in fact the case. Since there's no other way to get the question answered, this is the only opportunity.
Okay, well, I don't believe anybody's gonna answer each night.
No one can answer their question. Can anyone answer this question? I asked it last week. During Chief Barber's term, he has brought in and a good amount of money to the fire department, which has been used for training purposes, for equipment. Does anyone have any idea the total amount of that money?
I would say the gentleman you need to talk to is right there. You should know how much he's brought in.
Yes, I know he does. I want to know if this council is aware of that fact.
I'm aware he's brought in some money.
Do you know how much?
No.
Does the person who is his supervisor know how much?
Once again, I'm gonna answer you. This is quite, this is citizens' comments. This is not citizen questions.
Are you his supervisor?
Am I his supervisor? Ultimately, yes.
Ultimately, yes. Are you the person who writes his evaluation?
No. Not in data and operations.
Then who is the person who writes his evaluation?
Mr. Scott Frank does.
Mr. Frank, have you done an evaluation for him at this point?
Ma'am, I'm gonna repeat, twenty twenty-two is not over.
I beg your pardon?
Twenty twenty-two is not over.
That is correct. It is not over. Do you have plans to write any evaluation?
I'm almost done.
At this meeting, you said that you had some verdicts, that Chief Barber had some verdicts in his personnel file. Is that if not true?
I corrected that statement.
You corrected that statement?
Mm-hmm.
Did you correct that statement in that meeting?
I did.
Before or after?
During that meeting, I corrected it. Go watch it. Okay.
I was there.
Chief Barber, did we not correct that on, on the spot?
Okay.
Did I not, no, no, those things, please. This, this is important. Yeah, when I brought that up, Senator, did you tell me that it was verbal?
The other question I have is this. You, we, you said that partly, without putting words in your mouth, you said that part of the consideration had to do with the fact that Chief Barber does not have a master's degree, and you were using that in comparison with former police chief who had a master's degree. Is that correct?
Can I, can I interject here? Why, why, why are we going through this right now?
We're trying to be.
Why, why?
Because.
Well, why are you, why are you fighting his battle if he, if he's unhappy or unhappy about his raise? Why would he not directly go to the city manager and discuss that?
Because it's my understanding that the council has posted, various council members have posted on Facebook and other social media pages that if citizens are unhappy with the way things are being done, they should attend city council meetings and bring that up, which is what I'm doing.
I agree, and I, that has, you didn't answer my question, so you're saying that we're not answering your questions. You didn't answer my question, so.
So I'm doing what, what's suggested.
No, no, stop, everyone, order. Ma'am, usually we allow three minutes for citizens' comments. We're up to about six or seven now. I, I understand that you have a lot of questions. This is not, this is called citizen comments. You're allowed to get up there, comment about what you think is wrong.
All right, then this is what I think is wrong. I think it's wrong that Chief Barber is not being considered in the same light as other employees of this city. I think it's wrong that he did not receive a raise at the time that others, who are less qualified, who lied about their qualifications and yet were still given a raise. I think that's wrong. I think that the fact that we may lose Chief Barber as chief of our fire department is a terrible, terrible thing. The fact that there is a thought going around that perhaps we should reduce our fire department to a volunteer one is a terrible, terrible thing.
That's, that's, that's been dispelled. That's, that's, we, no one's ever said that, and I saw people even comment on Facebook. We've never talked about that. This council will never allow that.
That's fine. However, the fact remains that Chief Barber is not being treated with the respect that he deserves. He is not being given the consideration that he deserves. I am not the only citizen who believes that. I am, however, one of the very few citizens who's willing to come before this council and deal with it. I came to a meeting last week. I was not responded to, several of you were at that meeting, so you know what I'm talking about. I was simply asking questions for which I did not get answers. There's nowhere to get answers. You can't get them in council meetings. You can't get them in committee meetings. There's nowhere to get the answers. So the only thing that I have, the only option as a citizen that I have, is to bring it out in a public forum where other citizens who are watching, as they are, the council meeting, can hear. I have talked with other members of our community who feel the same way I do, but as I said, there are a good number of them who are not willing to come before the council and talk for a variety of reasons. Not the least of which is they're not listened to. So I leave it in your hands. Unfortunately, Chief Barber's evaluation is almost, his evaluation period is almost at an end. Couple more weeks and we will be in twenty twenty-three. He will not have received that consideration. He will have lost that salary, and we may lose him. I think that this council needs to do whatever it can to keep the man here. And I'm not the only one who feels that way. But I am one of the very few who's willing to come in here and say that publicly, knowing that tomorrow, there will be comments made by various people, some of whom sit on this council, in a disparaging manner.
Okay. Thank you for your comments.
Oh, you're quite welcome, Mr. Johnson.
There's no reason to make them personal. When you start personal, we're done. Thank you.
It was personal, Mr. Johnson. Your comments on your page were personal.
Well, ma'am, when you start discouraging, I want to explain something real quick. Chief Barber, I've known Chief Barber for probably about fifteen years. He has not come to me and said that he has a problem or anything.
Are you aware of his problem?
No. So here's the problem. How in the world can you address something when he doesn't come to me? Okay? So I appreciate your comments and stuff, but we're, this is called citizen comments, not per, not making this personal. It's city business.
You think that I'm doing this out of the, out of my act? You think I'm doing this because I sat up one morning and said, what can I do to cause problem?
No, but it does sound like you have intimate knowledge of a situation with Mr. Barber that we're not aware of, and as far as I know, the city manager's not aware of either, so.
I believe the city manager is aware.
You are, you are, I feel like you've shared a lot of, you know, opinions.
The city manager is aware.
But, you know, the reality is having this on Facebook or having citizens fight on his behalf, I feel like it's inappropriate. I feel like he should have gone on to the city manager to deal with this. You know, if he feels disparaged or, you know, feels neglected or what have you, then he should deal with it directly with the city manager and not, because, I've known him for a long time too. He's brought the level of our fire department professionalism up to a much higher level than it ever was since I've been in the city. But going and talking to citizens individually about, oh, I'm unhappy, woe is me, and it comes out in Facebook, and then you, you're coming and speaking on his behalf, and he's not, he hasn't said anything. He didn't say anything in the police and fire meeting. I watched it online. He didn't say until later in the meeting, when it was brought up, that we might lose him, that he actually was considering that. So I think, to be honest, that's, it's, that was unprofessional. I think it should go directly to this.
Mr. Taylor, let me, let me.
Well, I, I, I'm sorry, ma'am. I let you, I let you, I let you talk there.
No, sir, I'm not asking you to do this.
Enough, enough.
I'm doing this on my.
Stop. Okay. You've had your time.
I've had my time.
Yes.
Again, as usual.
I'm just trying to respond. I'm entitled to him. I'm the two.
Order. Let's go.
Cut it off if you don't like the discussion. But do something about it, please. Or we're gonna lose him.
Wow, was that, who's next?
Oh, that's gonna be great.
All right.
It's gonna take longer than three minutes. If you cut me off in the morning, cut me off.
Okay.
I'm sure, Brooks, I'm at one twenty-three East Palm Street in Nelsonville. Just, I wanna ask a few questions here, and we've.
You can't ask questions, Mr. Taylor.
Ma'am, please.
We're part of a group, uh, who, uh, took over one ninety-two.
You stop.
One ninety-two Fayette Street was what we know as the new park for the park across from the old high street. Everybody aware of that area? And we decided that we wanted to try to clean up that particular area. So at the time, and I'll take you back real quick how we got to this point. I can remember after we had the accident down on thirty-three, and we surely lost an officer, and that was terrible. And I remember my mother-in-law and father-in-law were in that particular wreck. And I was standing there, and Mr. Duncan, and so, we were all sitting there, and all of a sudden, a call came in that there was another problem on Fayette Street down in that area. And the police turned around with Hocking College, and they took that call and went down to that domestic. There were domestic problems down there all the time, all the time. So as I took my mother-in-law and father-in-law home, I saw the police, and I thought, you know, this is just wrong. Here we've lost a great officer, we've had a tragedy in this town, and we're down here on this little town, and we're trying to take care of the domestic, which the police have called down there many, many, many times. There's drug activity. There was a, um, there were people there that would call constantly and so on and so forth. So therefore, my wife and I thought, you know, we need to do something with this. So we got with the landlord and the White House. My wife and I, we, we bought the house there, which was at one ninety-two for twenty-five thousand dollars from Mr. Hartley. He gave us a great deal on that. And we got the money through the Greyhound Association and a lot of people there and bought what we call Smitty's Golf Station. And we bought that piece. Went to Mr. Frank, and we had the money, had ten thousand dollars to build to demolish the White House, which we did. They had money there for them to demolish that property, and that was nice. Took that down. Then we got the other Smitty's Golf Station, and had Dan Sherman, and I had John Clay, the contractor, and they took that particular structure down, at no pay, at no cost to us. And part of it was called to Hocking College for fill for them, and the other part was, uh, taken to the landfill. So then we started to, to try to revitalize that particular park, sat down with Mr. Frank, and we talked about what we could do and so on. He advised me that we could get some, uh, fill from the, uh, the project down below Town Sewer Plant. He called them, and we went down, and we got, I think, sixteen loads of fill, and he brought that in. Mr. Sherman, again, you have to have a truck. You have to have a backhoe. There's no relation between us and the park other than he helped us. He did that for free as he hauled that in. Then we did the concrete and so on. Mr. Sherman would pay for that concrete and everything. Then we applied for a grant. We got money from individual, we applied for a grant to the Barrett Foundation, which has come through the city, which we did. And that money was turned over to us, uh, should I say, to us, to the Greyhound Park Association. State associations, my brother Mike, Johnny Flower, and Bob Home Law. It's not a real tight committee. So we did that, and then we applied for a grant, um, from the Appalachian Foundation. And I find out that they will not accept that from the foundation now. And then we apply one for RCIF, which is through Rocky, and you're not gonna accept that through the foundation. We've asked, uh, Mr. Frank did tell us that we, he put in electric, which they did, and, um, we had the meter set, and we've asked for approximately three to four months when the electric was beyond, what we turned on. We have one meter, one base meter, ready to be set in there, and we've been waiting for that, that particular answer. So I just, I'm trying to find out, you know, we're rad on this. I, I, I think there's been some discommunication, so I'm just asking, what are the, the, the reasons why you would not accept the other two donations for this park?
Um.
That's a question I don't, I don't.
Well, I, I can, I can kind of help you out with that. The only person who can legally apply for money for the city is the city manager. For our, under our charter.
Even with the Barrett Foundation? That was given to us?
Well.
The first one.
We'd have to look into that.
Was that paid directly to you, or was it paid directly to the city?
To the city, and then the city was written a check, as they do, to the Nelsonville Greyhound Association. Same way we'd set the other two up. Takes a long time, you know, we, we filled out the paperwork, you know, for the Appalachian Foundation. It takes a long time to do that. There's a lot of hoops you go through, which is fun. Same way with the RCIF. You know, that money's not, Mr. Sherman's been paid. I don't, I don't want people to sit here and think that we would write him a check. Uh, we're just trying to make a, a blighted area as nice as we can make it. We're gonna do some, uh, plannings and so on and so forth. But I'm, I'm just getting, um, that we're just not, all of a sudden, we, we're not going anywhere.
I have, where, where do these monies get passed through to? We, the city's been a pass-through for, uh, multiple nonprofits in the past and grants when we've received it, but where does the money go?
It goes in, it goes in what we, the Nelsonville Greyhound, um, account, which is one account, Nelsonville Home and Safe.
I also have a receipt here where, um, the payment has been processed by AEP for the hookup. So being in fact, this process means.
That's good, yeah. And, you know, we got a lot of hassle. I'm, I'm, I'm not saying blame it. I'm just saying it's a lot of hassle from, flags gotta be lit. We did buy, I bought a light for that flag that was put into the concrete and so on and so forth. Um, and, um, so we just got a lot of hassle. We had to get the flag down because the, from the V F seven and other people. It's not, we're not trying to cause problems. We're just trying to work through this to make it, you know, a better place. You know, you got a, a multimillion dollar building across the street. You know, what they did to that school was unbelievable to me. I never thought that would ever happen, and it's a great asset to this town. And I didn't want that multimillion dollar building being looking across, frankly, just a bunch of trash. That was all that was there. People wouldn't walk. They would take their dogs. And I've got, uh, over eleven hundred, there's still that many left, greyhounds, that have donated a lot of mon, you know, money and, and personal money to, to put this together and to be able to put the, the benches and build hook plaques with the classes and so on and so forth.
Well, I can tell you this, Mr. Brooks, I would be glad to have a meeting with you and Mr. Frank.
Okay.
And we could, we could get everything out in the open on what we're doing, what's planned, what is scheduled.
Let's do that.
So that we can eliminate the gray areas.
Yep, that's fine. You give me the time, and I'd love to do that.
Yeah, I don't, honestly, I don't think it's, I don't think it's, you know, an issue of, uh, you know, transferring, uh, grant monies through the city for projects like this, but I think it, the issue, because Dan did a lot of work on it, is we don't want, we just went through a really, really intense audit. If, I don't know, you may have heard of it. There was a lady who was just put in jail.
Sure. Um, for, you know, for stealing from the city, and we went through a really, really intense audit, and we really, we can't
have any red flags or anything that looks or appears, um, to, you know, be improper. And so, um, to me, I think that would be the only thing that would be holding this up.
Just understand that I, you know, and I agree with you a hundred percent. I understand he has the equipment. We didn't bid it out. He happened to have the equipment, so there were so many things he didn't charge us for. I mean, so many, you know, concrete's concrete. You pay for it. You gotta pay for the labor for someone to put it down. I get all that. It's a lot of, we're just, the gratitude of him.
I just got notification that AEP has promised no later than the twentieth.
Okay.
So we will have power down there on the twentieth.
Let's get together. Let's put our heads.
I know, we wouldn't hold our breath, but.
I know. Look, let's put our heads together, and let's work this out. It's been, you know, I, um,
Yeah.
I think there's been some discommunications, and I think that would be what we need to do.
Because we, uh, we have a change order here that they paid, uh, we have paid over thirty-five thousand dollars down at the, uh, we had a thirty-five thousand dollar change notice due to the electricity not being at the, uh, one of the treatment, uh, the wastewater plant, the wastewater plant, that we just have been waiting on electric to get down there. So maybe once the hookup, the power.
Understand. I do, I do understand that. But I understand too, that we're talking about one dynamic, one.
But it's considered commercial. That, that's a, do you mind Jason walking?
No, Jason's, Jason's more than pleasant. I've asked Jason, and he's, you know, he's gotten back. What do you know?
I, I've, I've been on the phone with him twice a week. Um, they keep changing the date. He promised me Friday that it would be no later than the twentieth.
Okay. Will you explain the paperwork being lost, found?
Then, so there was two papers I had to scan and send back. I sent them back, and he said that we only sent one. And I'm like, you need to recheck, and he started looking. He's like, oh, you didn't send it. He had to forward it to somebody else. So there was some lost time there because he didn't forward what he needed to forward. Um, but it is considered commercial because it's a, a community park. It's not a private, like a residence, or it can't be residential, so they, we're on, we're on schedule, but it's just when they get time to get to us.
Okay. We can solve that one, and Tony, we'll get together and we'll solve this, you know, with the funds that we've applied for. Uh, you know, like I said, we got one that came through, and the other two have been, you know, backed up, so it's just, we just want to finish and hand you the keys. Uh, where the dogs use the bathroom, we're done.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? Please state your name and your address.
Hi, I'm Carol. I'm sorry. And I actually live in Logan, but I raised my three kids, um, in Nelsonville, including Gary, which is my son, my oldest. Um, I came up, and my sister came up on Thursday around one o'clock because we were told that we could get a copy of his files. When I listened to that meeting last week, it, all I heard was, um, Glenda saying something, asking about the files and what was in his files. Mr. Scott, you kept saying, no, you don't want to see that. It's embarrassing. She said embarrassing, and you said, yeah, embarrassing. I, yes, it's on record. Okay. I'm mom. You put mom there. What's in his file? That's embarrassing. I came up Thursday, three days after this meeting, and, um, some girl said that she were in a meeting, so we waited and waited, saw you pull in. You eat your shoes off, your boots off on the corner of the field. We got watched the whole time. And then all of a sudden, we go back in, to go back in, because we saw you go in, and the door's locked. We're in the bathroom. You lock the front door while you go to bathroom?
Yes.
There was other people in here. She was still in here.
I didn't see her. Anyway.
Anyways. So we made a phone call, and she answered the phone, and she said, then where's that lock? And I said, yes, it is. We just tried it. And she goes, oh, well, we have to have a quick meeting. That was what she said. Okay. But I'm saying, I said, she said, it's on recording, so it's okay. But that's what she told us. I am still waiting for that folder, that file. You said that we could have a copy at the last meeting. I want to know what's in that file. Um, that's embarrassing. And we didn't.
I didn't think you said that you could have a copy of his personnel file. I thought, when I watched, I thought you said you could.
Have to go through.
We did. Okay.
It's a public, it's a public.
The first time.
She's gonna make the public for her, because she's the last brother of public, and then she might be able to get.
The first time we came in, um, we asked for the form to fill out. Well, the girl, young lady said that there, there is no form.
Yeah, well, it's.
And then, when we came in the second time, he said, well, I have a form. I just don't know where it's at. So, um, we asked them, what is in the file that is so embarrassing? What is the city gonna find out that Harry did that's so embarrassing? Now, Mr. Frank, you did this. Verbal, verbal. I told you, and, and Harry knows it was verbal. You remember doing that to my sister? And she looked at you and said, don't treat me like a child. We still have not got forms. We still don't have the file. And why you're after him, I don't know, because I'm telling you what, I don't make it to all the events, but he has a lot of events that come back in Nelsonville. A lot of events. And he is not gonna go off, and he's not gonna let his guys go off with their uniforms on or with their gear on to anything that's not affiliated with the fire department. I can tell you that.
Can I address?
Yes, you can. I say yes.
No. Hold special, so. No.
Okay.
No, there is my direct contact. I just, just Bob.
I just want to say how rude you were. That was very rude to treat people like that. And the door was locked, and there was the rule in there because I immediately came back in. And we're called.
Sorry.
Well, when I, when you call me and I get, you know, and we get the call that you have the, the records ready, I do want a copy still.
Attorney, does he know we're ready for this meeting? Okay. So you can get the record, absolutely. All right.
Yeah.
Anyone, anyone else? All right, uh, business and organizational comments. The floor is yours. Please introduce yourselves and everything.
Luke Saltridge, I'm the executive director of St. Louis Public Government Council. This is Aaron. Aaron's our southeast Ohio lead. So Sopec is a council government for a nonprofit agency that serves twenty-two entities across, mostly southeast Ohio. Uh, because far west is Dayton, and sort of village is a small Daytonville, which I can serve every entity in Athens County, the exception of Nelsonville, uh, Tolville, and Wauster, just Wauster campus famous people program. So we're excited to talk to you all tonight. Please begin. All right, we were formed in twenty fourteen as an alternative private brokers, and I'll get into what, um, the bread and butter will do here in a minute, but a little bit more about us first. And we're governed by the communities we serve. As I mentioned, we're governments. We are audited regularly as well. Public meetings, um, and our headquarters is in Athens. We are a leader on the community. Our board is made up of large communities, uh, five regions, which is four corners of state, central file, and then five large representatives, which allows, uh, villagers have a seat at the table, allows special disease, like severe water districts to be present. And then our bigger, um, governing boards are general symbols. That's every single member community, um, convenes together in that group. So that's Scott Lee, that's Felbre, that's Logan, um, and that's. let's catch a look there. There you go. As I mentioned, a whole lot of villages. So it's Tremble, it's Bookdole, that is Chancy, it's, but you can hear Harry County. You can see the map. We'll read them all. We do spread out pretty good across this part of the state. Excited about that, growing year on year. We're also AP Energy's second largest customer. So when there's a problem, we have the ability to call AP and hopefully facilitate those conversations, expedite some of the problems, which is particularly exciting for some of our smaller communities. We were the largest customer for AP until Columbus came into this program themselves. They're very good and we are. Quick run of our staff. We're actually now up to seven employees. We also have inside, inside and outside councils. One of the things that we do for communities is that we have the ability to help them with energy projects. There are attorneys. We also have special attorneys on retainer that work with energy projects, whether it's solar, whether it's other big scale development issues or even some policy questions they come up with. One of those is Dickinson Wright. And we also have an house council that's able to serve day to day needs. We also believe we're part of the economic development community. So we are active members of every local chamber of commerce that we serve, as well as Main Street programs, and participate pretty actively. In fact, we'll be in Columbus this week at the Main Street, the Heritage Ohio Awards Ceremony for Appalachian Ohio this week, which several communities here now, it's going to be recognized. Community choice aggregation is the ability to buy power en masse. So here in Ohio, we're a deregulated energy market. I'll come back to this here in a second. You can shop where your power comes from. So generation can fund your power. So you're still buying power through the lines and wires, whether it's AP in this part of the state, other utilities in other parts of the state, but you can shop as individual. You can also shop as a community or a whole block of communities can shop for power together. So we represent that buying power of a whole bunch of communities coming together. Again, the size of Dayton and villages and everything in between. And there's a picture of our grid. If you're ever curious about our electric grid, it's written in the US. We can come back to that if there's any questions on that. We're part of a regional grid here in eastern United States, what's called RTO, which is 13 states. This is how the lights stay on. It's called PJM in this part of the state, our country. And that blue is how our power is priced. So it's kind of air traffic control leads Wall Street, where they put the lights stay on and they can put pricing structures, a good chunk of it. So community choice aggregation comes out of that. It allows us to have the ability to control the generation supply. So it's roughly half your electric bill is the generation side of your electric bill. And that's what we're talking about tonight. We're not talking about lines. We're not thinking about wires. We're talking about the power you're buying on those lines and wires. And that's what interest aggregation allows for. It's happening all over Ohio. Again, talking about the actual electricity itself. Here's a map of communities that have done community choice aggregation across the state of Ohio. Roughly 400 communities have programs. You can go through electric and gas, separate utilities, but pretty large. You'll see Orange or Townships, Yellow County and blue are the cities and villages that have done it. But pretty common across the state and it's been happening for over 20 years in the state. Folks that will be impacted, communities that enable the program, is small, commercial, residential, and pretty large, small, commercial for that matter. Folks that can't participate if everybody's in PIP, that they're prohibited to participate in this program, there's folks on payment based utility programs. Folks that have large, larger industrial loads are too big to vote for setting this program. And then anybody who doesn't want to be part of it. So folks can be put on a list to be prohibited from being a legitimate person in the first place, or they can shop anytime. Our program has always been, and many of them, not all, many of them have no early termination fees. Folks can shop for power at any time once this program is done. But what you're doing is resetting the floor for pricing. So some utility saying, this is what price costs us here. We're negotiating your behalf, creating a separate price and folks can decide between the two, which they want to go with. But hopefully we've done our job and we're staying safe accordingly. So the way to get to this process is that residents have a say in the matter. Again, over 400 communities have done this already, but in order to get to that stage, it has to go to the voters first. So the voters pass legislation and enables and provides council to implement a program. And council can decide not to. Or you can decide now is not the right time. We just helped Dayton reactivate their program after idling it for a few years. But this is what we're approaching with tonight is you guys considering putting on the spring ballot, which is the final deadline of February 1st, but putting on the spring ballot or offer as council to enact a program. And there's public input along the way too. We can talk about what that looks like, but before it goes live, you have to hold public hearings as well. There's also legislation in order to win SOPEC. One of the easiest ways of doing it would be join up with us and all the other communities in Athens County. And that would be passing two pieces of legislation, one of which again requires two public hearings with two weeks' public notice. But you can go ahead and join us now in advance of that to help work on the process of getting there. One of the features of our program, I'll talk about it a little bit, is that we are also 100% green in our programs. Our power supply is 100% green. Well, I'll come back to what that means and what the implications are for us in the region. We've been able to secure fixed pricing, so our rates are not going to go up and down. And you've been watching utility prices, they've been going up and away lately. So we lock in one-year blocks, one, two, three years simply, or anywhere in between, but large lengths of time, no shorter than 12 months of time. We also have community grants as a feature of our program. We passed around some flyers to council. I think we may ask some extras if not, we're happy to show that, describe some of our community grant resources and things that they've achieved here locally. Some of the highlights real quick, City of Logan now has Tesla police cars. They ran the math on these city police cars and it actually penciled out. But one thing they were lacking was the chargers. So we gave them a small grant to buy the chargers so they could hook them up. We also just helped EMS station number 56, EMS station out on 56, has solar. We helped with that project. We helped Athens with a local match for battery backup on their water plants. We just set a regional grant for the Bailey's Trail System to help them apply for a grant for a $1.5 million ARC grant. We provided the initial funding for them to go study to get a position to apply for. So pretty wide variety of stuff when I'm having to talk more about that. Solar RP's. We also again have attorneys. We're helping write group proposals so we can bundle communities together and consider putting solar, local firehouses, city buildings, get you guys pricing for it and consider it. Here are a couple of examples. And I'll say upfront, 100% of our programs are green and 100% of them are saving money in presence. My voters have had to say estimating savings. They'll tell you the utilities lock in price for a year or it fluctuates slightly, but pretty close to a year. There's small pieces of the changes within AP. But I'll go to Dayton first. Dayton is roughly 30% below market right now, below what the standard service offer is. So if you do nothing, your community doesn't have an initiation program in Dayton, which is AES territory, southwest part of the state. We are currently saving them 30% this year. So from this June till next June, that's by the savings. It's about $10 million just for residents in Dayton. So we're pretty excited about that. You'll see they're at 10.9 with standard offer. We're at 7.457. Standard offer's not green power. We are green and yet we're still 30% below. The reason for that's timing. So we are able to be more flexible and nimble and make some really informed decisions. So with Dayton, we say yellow dot to the left, that's when we bought power. And it's been up and down a little bit. The utilities bought it closer to this range here. You can see my cursor. Actually, we bought it in March and then April. So the price of power went up dramatically. We correctly, and I'm not happy about this, but correctly anticipated the invasion of Ukraine and the timing of that. So we made sure that Dayton bought power and danced that and didn't see that spike in power. The utility saw, knowing they had an auction that was happening shortly thereafter. So what you care, probably more is AP territory, because that's where we are right here. I think a good chunk of southern and central Ohio relate to. We are currently at 5.64. So this is Bookdole, this is Logan, this is Athens, pretty, Galvez, Bellbury, pretty much a good chunk of this part of the state. And so they are presently saving about 22, 23% versus what you guys are currently paying and, you know, the city doesn't know right now. So residents of those communities that choose to participate in this program are at 5.64 cents with green power and through next June. Utilities are at 7.32 right now, AP is. So that represents again about 23% savings. And I'm not going to talk about this much today. You may have heard about the Athens carbon feed, something Athens did above and beyond. Even Athens is saving about 20% off the power supply with that price then. So this can really represent real savings for residents, especially right now. And again, it's a hedge against increases. So it may not be that it's going to be what prices were last year or year before. Prices have still gone up a lot of things. So we're able to lock in and save folks money against what the utilities are doing. So we're happy about that, trying to protect customers accordingly. In this one, we've locked into April 2021, so the price is going to come there. That's about $3 million in good money savings for citizens to have. And again, same chart, different time, look what we bought. Here's what we got today. And I'm showing you natural gas prices. It's a really good proxy for the price of electricity right now because most base load power is coming from natural gas, as we've shifted away from coal largely. There's a very strong correlation between the price of natural gas. Not directly, but it's pretty strong just to see indicators of what, where to shop for power today, or is this what it was. If you're ever curious what the price of power is on the market, the state runs a website called Energy Choice, apples to apples. You can check, see what those rates are. I also view us playing a concern protection role. So some of those price offers are very short term variable pricing. So it may have one really great introductory rate and it changes next month. So we get a lot of calls of what happened. My bill went from five cents to 21 cents month to month. That's a lot of sticker shock. So the predictability and the public servants being there with us to run through the process feel, folks feel usually pretty good about that and that they have that level of trust that we're also public employees ourselves, helping guide the process. I mentioned some of the community grants. Here's highlighting quite a few. I've referenced a few already. Some of them were basic ones that are still important. So Bellbury needed to make an upgrade on their lighting system for the saltwater fields. They were paying about $1,000 a month in just service charges and having this spike demand when the coach came out and put the lights on for practice. So by putting a delay timer, they're saving $7, $800, $1,000 a month on that spike charge for what, I'm not even saying about $20 natural electricity, is the man charge that's going. So we're having to be flexible. These are building the program again with savings. These are all reflected and these are given back on a per meter basis, based on what our board, which is made up of elected officials inside every year, it's going to be part of our budget that we give in here. We have 70% of the grants go back in that manner zone. 10% are set aside for regional projects. So small cities and villages are able to pull together as leveraged projects that are meaningful, like the Bailey's. And then 20% are set aside for rolling one fund. So if you have an LED upgrade project and they pay for itself in a year and a half, you don't have that front capital, we're providing capital for you guys to do that case for itself and then you repopulate the fund so that you can move on to the next project or somebody else can do that. With the EV charger grants, and thank you Nelsonville for having a fast charger. That's actually great with our brand in southeast Ohio. We've been helping expand that. And that literally puts you on the map, which you guys being in 33 is an awesome thing to be. We have been offering bridge capital to communities that didn't have the ability to front that, had to float the capital for two or three months, and especially a small village, that's really tough to come up with. So we have, we've got unending resources. We have enough to help with some of those bridge capital gaps as well. Lowly pricing, something else we do. We're happy to evaluate your accounts for the city and see if we can save you money. If we can't, we'll tell you as much that the standard service offer, they better price than the market is at a given moment. The Sean Watershed District, which goes with some of the counties one remembers now, they're currently floating. By the time their contracts had expired, it made sense for them to state the standard service offer at six cents versus coming of us, which was slightly higher. So we quoted as much. Another example, the Logan Food Bank, Southeast Ohio Food Bank, a couple years ago now, one of the commissioners reached out to us, let us know they were considering a diesel generator and wanted some advice on considering if maybe solar was a good option too. We explored that with them and reviewed their electric bills. As we were doing that, realized they were paying about two and a half times the market rate for electricity and didn't realize it. So that resulted in about $40,000 a year in savings for the Southeast Ohio Food Bank, which is real money. They've also additionally added solar. And that, using enough electricity there for roughly 48 houses. So that has real impact long-term and they're all resilient now. So power goes out, they are much more able to conduct business and keep this research going. P3 also enables some creative customization. Folks who really want to do green stuff, we're happy to talk to them, but every community is in a different place on what the priorities are, the different projects and infrastructure. So we just helped with the net zero EMS station in Athens. If you haven't seen that building, I highly recommend it. They were able to do basic things like tape the seams and add a little extra insulation, make the walls a little thicker. And as a direct result, all the system upgrades were paid for by them being able to downgrade the HVAC system. They were able to shrink the HVAC system. So less heating and cooling power needed. So less, more system paid for, which was a basic upgrade. So just an example, we're happy to help convene and share those ideas and pass them back and forth. We are committed to renewable energy. My grandfather started life working in a coal mine. A lot of us have that heritage and connection to this region. And I'll make sure that we have the ability in a new economy to leverage where it's going. So renewable energy is definitely a part of the future. Make sure we don't let behind it. So we've always had an energy leadership role in this region and we think it's important for us to be leaders. So one of the things we're doing is helping get credentialing. I'll show you the map in a second on that guy. Renewable energy for us, largely winded solar, but we're willing to be creative and talk about other stuff too. This talks about how we get the renewable energy credits. I'll skip down here. I think this map is awesome. So EPA gives an award every year for communities that exceed the green power buying requirements. You notice a theme there. Not a lot of Ohio is doing this. Southeast Ohio lights that map up. So we got a call from Chicago DC when we put in our applications. And you're going to start seeing these signs go up all over our member communities. We do all the paperwork to file for it, but as we're building a heritage and ecotourism in this part of the state, we feel very confident that that extra value add puts feeling good. And while saving residents money, we never promised to always save money, but we promise to be competitive in rates. We're going to do our best to save you money. But being green really makes us a leader in the state. So while we're also saving 23% off the market currently, we feel very proud that our region's taking a leadership role in that. And you're going to see that recognition for myself. I'd love for you guys to get one of those signs as well, but you're going to see those all over this part of the state. Another credential that I don't believe you guys have done yet, we're happy to talk to you guys regardless of you move forward in education or not on this, but it's called Soul Smart. And this is another national credential. We were one of three agencies a few years ago to be added to this list, but not a lot of cities in Ohio have done this so far. But this is streamlining the permit process for solar development on homes and businesses and just making sure there's not a lot of red tape. It's not necessarily helping have those conversations upfront. So citizens don't have to come in one by one and try to figure it out. So there's a process to try to streamline that. Some of it involves staff training, usually at the higher levels, but a very basic level, the very basic requirements have to do with having a policy on the books, having some things in your website that indicate. We're happy to support that as well. So just another program I'm going to mention briefly that we're happy to help with, here regardless of your problems right now. Solar, you may have heard that the City of Athens is doing a two and a half megawatt solar project that's in progress this week. We are behind the scenes helping in the technical support on that. We're also the first in the state to do net metering. If you don't know what that means, when you produce solar on your roof, you use different power loads at different times. So when you're home, you're using more power, but when you're away from home, you use less. So in the event that you're overproducing more power than you use in a given moment, this enables your meters to spin backwards effectively and for you to get credited accordingly. So we make sure that our program allows folks that want to take control of the energy supply, we're going to need to do that. All right. So let's dig into it. Let me get nuts and bolts real quick and then we'll get all the questions you all may have. So the, so the process, if you guys want to move forward with this, you have until February 1st to pass legislation and file with the county clerk. And that would enable you guys to vote on it. If you want to do this, and this would be a little novel, currently the City of Athens has electric and gas aggregation programs. It requires separate legislation for electric versus gas. We've not historically done a gas program at SOPEC. We are currently developing one and should have one up and running within the next month or two. So before you guys even be eligible by voting next spring, that will be in place. But I would encourage council to go and consider to go ahead and vote on the ballot, because most citizens, once they wrap their mind around one, the other's a very similar concept. We are happy to do an education campaign. That's why I brought this sign in. These are our yard signs. Citizens often think we're trying to be confusing because we don't tell them how to vote. But that's because we're government. We can't tell them how to vote legally because we're government. So our job is education. We will inform to the best of our abilities and happy to support communities in those campaigns to do some literature, to do very basic yard signs, just to make sure if citizens are aware. And if they have any questions, happy to attend public hearings for them to walk through what it means if they were to engage any program itself. So we're happy to provide that support and be one of those. And then the third piece of legislation would be legislation to actually join SOPEC. So this would be just setting forth the motion, the first step in joining us. And then after the citizens voted in appropriately, and every single one that went on ballot last cycle passed, not to say it's easy and it doesn't always happen, but this last election cycle, everyone of them passed, including a few that did not pass in the past. Then there's two public hearings for the citizens to get input to council on your plan of governance. So how this thing's going to run. Let's file the Public Utilities Commission. If you were to link onto ours with the rest of this region, then you guys wouldn't have to develop your own. You would be part of our group. And also it was taking advantage of our contract with AP. So you guys would be able to come in there with an amendment to the contract with some of your own terms and conditions, but you wouldn't have to go reinvent the wheel. Sometimes administrations look at this like, oh, it's a whole lot. Our attorneys are there at your disposal. Everything's in place. So for council, it's really a policy decision. Do you want to be empowered and ask the citizens to be empowered to take on a program to give you the option? And then the time comes around, you say, we like the pricing, we feel good about this, we think this makes sense for us, or we want to float for a little while, great. But you have to go to the voters to be empowered to do it where the Ohio regulation works. Any questions? That's a lot.
So what's the advantage of going on a spring ballot versus a fall ballot? It would normally cost us additional money to put something on a spring ballot, is why I ask.
Yeah.
And versus if it's on a regular November ballot?
So there's some considerations. Some of it largely political and largely just when you think the most informed voter is going to be there. So regardless of party affiliation, folks that show up in the spring ballot or the primaries are really dedicated voters versus folks who vote from the general media and larger groups. So that's a consideration, it's a policy consideration for you, which you want to do. As far as cost, there's no cost of the filing fee to put this on the ballot. So it's not a levy. Where a levy would have to pay, I don't know what it is currently, but thousands of dollars to get it on the ballot. That is not the case with this. This is a policy decision. So there's not, that shouldn't be part of the calculation.
Okay. No, I appreciate that. That's what I was.
And so sometimes you try to confuse it as levy. There is, it's not a levy itself. It's the ability for you guys to negotiate and have by power. it's the ability for you guys to negotiate and ever have by power. Yeah.
How do you calculate the savings for communities such as Nelsonville? Say if we have a lot of folks that are on, if you, what you said is not, you know, they're not qualified to join this. How do you calculate the savings then for that? And it also sounded like you mentioned that you, citizens would have the option of being part of it or not, they could decide not to.
So what, the, the main way these are done is called all-out aggregation. So the default is everybody's in, they qualify, so excludes PIP, excludes people who shop before, which is roughly a third of the customer base. The shop, you guys say, great, they're doing a good job, not so great, they're not doing a good job and they want to get back in. In fact, Dayton, we launched the program, our price was so good that everybody's pouring back into it now, realizing that like, I want to be savings now, I'm a lot of real money. I'm sorry, I forgot the party question. So that's, you guys got PIP, so how are we typing these savings? So savings is going to be based on those who are participating. So it's, it's that customer based on the standard service offer, but what AP's providing is the base load utility offering, which they have auctions regularly, they set the prices versus what we're able to manage as the contract and trying to negotiate that time accordingly where we know we're going to save any. So yeah, I don't think answer all your questions.
You basically would only, you would, you basically would say, well, you have five thousand potential customers and would say twenty percent of them potentially would be PIP and not eligible. Then you're basing that on assuming seventy percent of the people in the remaining group take it, your savings would be X amount is how you're kind of calculating. You're calculating, but you won't really know until they, people join and participate and you're able, because it sounds like the more people signed up, the more buying power you potentially would have.
And we've got a quarter million potential customers within our footprint.
Okay, so they add, we add to your other bigger pie. Perfect, okay.
Yeah, which we currently split out Southeast Ohio versus Southwest Ohio, but ultimately it's a lot.
So it's more than just Nelsonville pulling into this?
So in the short term, it'll be Nelsonville plus another, other communities that decide to go out in this cycle. And then once you sync back up again, you'll be part of that larger group of buying power. So initially maybe a smaller subset of it. So a couple of cycles back, we had Rayo Brand, Chester Hill and Lowell over in Washington County all went together. So they ended up in one buying group and then I think around the same time, Bellbury and Oakley switched their programs, which they were doing on their own AP previously. We were thirteen percent better than they were on price. So we talked to them and they decided to join in to bigger group. So they're all with us now, so you'd probably be with some other folks at the same time.
Okay, that's great.
As, just as a note to Dayton, they have an average poverty level over there, thirty percent. A lot of our communities are twenty-two percent. So I like to say these certain communities are great. So a lot of our communities were very focused on the savings as part of the program, trying to make sure that, we don't ever promise it, because we're talking about the futures market of a commodity, but we're very conscious and aware of these communities we live in ourselves, making sure that we're doing a service, going positively. And our electors are going to make sure of that too. Ultimately, we're accountable to them and they're accountable voters. So ultimately, it's a public service program.
I've got a quick question. I've heard stories in the past, people shopping on their own and actually many years ago, I got called into it and it goes, hey, you're going to save this much on your electric generation and all of a sudden I pull my electric bill out and it's three hundred dollars more. How is that different from what you guys do?
So this is fixed pricing. So this is twelve-month minimums. We had a customer, I'm not going to name names, we had a customer recently, it was a relative of somebody we worked with and they sold the bill twenty-one cents. And they're eligible for the ad generation program, so we worked last week to get them back in ad generation program because they had shop. In particular, right now, it's prices are really volatile. If people are shopping, really read the fine print, because often there is an early termination fee, but sometimes even with the price variable now, that early termination fee, it's worth the price anyway. So definitely just read the fine print and check it. But if you're saying it's too good to be true, usually it's too good to be true. So if you're shopping and there's an outlier, there's a reason for it, it's usually because that's a variable price. As far as the citizens, if everything goes smooth, you guys decide to roll with us, everything sets up, we're required to file a letter, the public utilities commission, with the letter those citizens are going to get. So that letter is approved by the commission, they review it, make sure it's legal. Citizens have, they have ten days to review it and citizens have twenty-one days once the letter comes before the program starts. And then eventually it'll roll up and it's going to recycle. We don't charge you no termination fee. So historically in some programs, if you miss that twenty-one days, you're in, give us twenty-five dollars or fifty dollars, whatever it was, and get out. We've never done that, we don't have a plan to do that. Surprise, we're going to make sure we're serving the public good. So the early termination fee doesn't serve a purpose. So you've got twenty-one days, but you call on date twenty-two or date three-hundred, I don't care. You can go back and forth if you want to. It's just however long it takes the utility to get back in or out of programs.
However, the fees paid by the customers, is it just the straight rate or are there other?
It's embedded in the rate. Yes, that's a good question too. Often with a lot of government, councils of government, there's a fee associated with the cities. So we do not charge one. So if we've done our job effectively, we've not only saved the residents money, but our fees embedded in the rate. So embedded in that, it's our administrative fees, you're seeing part of the ongoing grants, but again, our budget's all approved by our members. So looking at the, our money generated now, a little bit set aside for operations, but there's no additional fee to the city.
Or the rest outside of it?
Nope, nope, it's all in there.
Perfect, thank you.
You're welcome. As a point of pride, we're actually twenty-five percent cheaper than Columbus right now. I think it's awesome. And one of our other competitors, which is a group that was doing this in northeast Ohio, Logan, is a hundred percent green and they currently are at five point six and they totally shut it down, like just around eleven cents for ground power. So southeast Ohio is really low right now, so proud of that.
Thank you very much.
Well, thank you all, we'll be in touch if you have any other questions. And again, I just know that if you guys want to go to ballot, you probably need to do it January and in considerations of emergency readings and all that kind of stuff. So we're happy to answer any questions if you guys want to have, we can have public forums to talk about it. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Moving on to maybe discussions.
Yes, Mr. President. I'm the chairman of the street committee and on December first, I received a letter from citizens and other committee members that do afforded on the stock. Can you address that letter?
Sure. It's a, so it is from top of Church Street, there's a concern of a citizen about stormwater that's crossing the road of Church Street, it's crossing the road and going down into her basement. Now, we've been there, Jason and myself, been out there multiple times and I don't know of any good way to reroute that water. And I spoke with Bob and asked what our responsibility was. I want to turn it over to Bob, maybe he can better explain what the city responsibility is. Typically, if there's a way that we can figure, before I turn it over to Bob, if there's a way we can easily divert water, we do it. We in the past have taken asphalt and put down and made curves, but this is just right uphill of the slip that we just repaired on Church Street. So I don't feel comfortable doing that and I don't feel comfortable digging anything out and possibly making the situation worse. So.
This is up this route you said from?
Uphill.
Yes. So all the work that we just did was below that then?
Absolutely. So that said.
Yeah, we talked and we said that maybe we can get an engineer up, take a look at that and see what they suggest. So it becomes a cost benefit analysis. Is the cost of doing that practical? And is it going to help that person? And is it then, if it's going to harm other people downhill, then it's not a cost benefit analysis. So we fix one problem and create three or four more, that's not practical. And you know, so I would suggest when we talk, said we get an engineer up there and see what they have to say about the problem. Will it help the individual? But if it causes more problems than it solves, it's not a good idea.
Yeah.
I'm not going to say we're not going to do it, we don't know.
Right. Hillside living is a constant struggle. It's an ongoing battle and we've been up there several times looking at and trying to come up with a solution and I don't, I don't know of a solution. So we'll get Mike Betts up there, but I've already spoke to him and he's supposed to be in town this week and he's going to go look at it, see what he can come up with, but we'll report back.
Okay, thank you. Have you had your street committee meeting in?
No. See, I don't know if that falls in utility or street committee because it's storm, more stormwater than streets. I don't, it's kind of a gray area, I'm not really sure where it falls. I know it went to street committee, but it's a stormwater issue.
We'll make it all after we get to you, you reported. Yeah. And they still want to have a street meeting anyway.
Yeah, we can get together.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? We had a police and fire committee meeting also, which I think we've already covered most of the topics for that one, but they also discussed bringing some volunteers on temporarily to cover some shifts, the fire department as well. And I did ask a question, I don't know if you got the answer for me or not, about the fireworks fund that wasn't expanded.
I mean, that meeting was kind of a.
Yeah, kind of wild, yeah.
Yeah, so what happened was the account was paid. So the year before, Scott Garrett came to me, wanted to increase the show, to double up the payment from the city. With COVID, shipping issues, Amber Fireworks cannot, could not provide the shelf, there's stuff on the ship. So we ended up getting shorted, we didn't get the show that we wanted, so that money stayed in the volunteers' account and then we made sure we had a fifteen thousand dollar show the next year. So I never, I didn't, you know, ask for the money a second time to the city because that money was already there.
Got you.
And I believe it was the fifteenth or the eighteenth of July when that bill was paid.
Got you. Yeah, I just, you weren't a hundred percent on it, so I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, I never saw what's going on, I couldn't, thanks very much, I found, we got to that question.
Anyone else? Okay. All right. Department updates. Cohen?
The valve machine is together and complete. We actually had training on Wednesday of last week and put a valve in. Everything looked pretty smooth, the guys really liked it. Takes longer to prep everything than it does to actually cut the valve in. Pretty impressed by our performance. The sewer project started, the next phase of the sewer project, I'm sure Scott's going to hit on it, but they're over off of Wood Lane right now. In the next week, week and a half, they're hoping to be on North Valley, Robert Street, they're bringing another crew in, going to attack it a little bit harder. We've done nineteen water repairs in the last month. We put down a total of one hundred and fourteen tons of asphalt this year for pothole repairs. I got that too yesterday or Friday. We replaced the section on Riverside Drive or section of the water main on Riverside Drive where we've had multiple, multiple leaks in the last two years. So we're going to cut that out, we replaced about two hundred and fifty foot. So hopefully that solves the problem up there and late night callouts. Lead pickup's going to continue through the seventeenth, we haven't had any in last week, just put that out there, through the seventeenth it'll continue. Had a camera crew in town a couple of times here in the last few weeks. We're tracking down some I and I issues that we have. We've got some pretty good leads on some that we're going to attack and hopefully get our I and I problems start getting it under control a little bit. The street sweeper is still down, they're waiting on the prices for parts. So it's got some issues.
Everybody please get out your brooms.
Well, it's just, it's got some issues.
It'll be faster.
It will be faster.
Well, it could have happened at a better time of the year or so.
What's the need, the, what's a vacuum motor?
The vacuum motor. Yeah. It wiped, it wiped cam on it. They're waiting on pricing on parts, they're, they're having a hard time finding some of the parts because it's coming with weather. The plow trucks are up very good, everyone's starting to start flying, just let everybody know anyways. We went through and we've done some stuff to plow them down very good. And all the ATV and door signs are in, so we can start going the ATV signs and when door is up and functional, we've got all the signs right here for that.
Mr. Cohen, the ninety-three repairs, I know we talked once before, when we have repairs, we're going to just go ahead and start putting in larger sticks instead of just replacing like six-foot lengths or whatever. Did we do that in these cases as well?
Some of them we have, we had one over at Bookdol, I wasn't available that weekend, it was, it was Thanksgiving weekend. Scott was out there with the crew the whole time. They had a fitting blow and it was an odd size fitting. The guys really come together because they had to come up, had to just work to come up with a solution to get it fixed. So.
But both the other ones were put in?
Yeah, when, when we, when we had a big blowout, we replaced in sticks.
Those were small pieces, manifolds, there were homemade manifolds over there. So Bookdol really just did whatever they could do back in the day just to get by, so it's just whatever you find underneath the ground down there.
Yeah, it was just some odd sized stuff and luckily they were able to piece some things together and they were out there for what, eleven hours?
Not that bad, we got there at three, we got home at one.
Any more questions for Mr. Cohen? Thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
Chief Barber?
I'll see it that way, I can actually see everybody here as well. All right, well first I have to say that at forty-five, I never thought that when I walked in the door today, I've seen my mother here.
You poked that bear, I'm sorry.
I do appreciate people from the public coming in and making statements. You know, since I have looked at a few options that have come my way and that's really started the room in the city of Nelsonville. A lot of people approached me very upset, thinking that it's a dumb deal that I'm automatically leaving the city. I have not made that decision yet and the only thing I've done actually is just entertain some offers that have came my way. That being said, I do appreciate the embarrassing support. Definitely wasn't expecting that. So my update will be short.
I apologize.
You know, a lot of people talk about grants. So that started, I was chief. The grants have been awarded to the fire department for roughly, they're close to five hundred thousand, probably more, four fifty, four sixty. And that's grants that have been awarded. I clearly had two grants that are open, that's the fire prevention grant that are still out there right now. The civil service commission is still working on testing dates. We had a January eleventh date. When I talked to the civil service commission, we were afraid that it wouldn't give us enough time to advertise and then get this tested in that we needed, the proper amount test. Plus PD needs a test date as well, so we're waiting on a test date that's probably going to look end of January, early February now, so we're just waiting on that. The annual firefighters breakfast on the seventh third was a success. And as most of you know, this event is set up to help raise sponsor the Christmas basket program. And as most of you know, this event is set up to help raise funds for the Christmas basket program. December fourteenth and fifteenth of this, this week, we have the annual Jim Conrad Christmas gift giveaway, five to eight. That'll take place at the fire department in the bay. Santa Claus will be there as well. Most of you know that our fire department photographer has had a health issue here recently. So we're gonna try to get somebody set up to help take pictures so everybody can have pictures of their children or their grandchildren on our Facebook page again. December sixteenth is the Santa parade. It starts at five thirty. This was a parade that, actually, it was actually Scott's idea. Something they did in Alaska and what we had was we had an issue with COVID and nobody was leaving their homes, especially the owner that we had in our community. So we decided to put Santa Claus on a trailer, decorate that trailer, decorate my truck and a couple other vehicles and just prayed Santa Claus through town. Unfortunately, because of some of the areas, we can't hit every street in the city, but we did post a map of the route and we do. The kids have come out and see that, so please look at the route that we have posted on our Facebook page. We're trying to get to a safe area where you can, you can sit and watch. December seventeenth, we'll be doing Christmas baskets in the city of Nelsonville in fact, in out in Yorktown show. This, I believe, is the seventy-fourth year of the Christmas basket program. Most people don't realize that the basket program was started upon the parade of hills. To recap, we have a scheduled training, training with Oakland Valley State Railway on January eighth. I'm going to include, we're invite the police department as well. A lot of us have already had training on the routes, crosses, crossings, and the ins and outs of the cars and the, and the engines. On the ENS side and the fireside, but I don't believe the police department has had that, so I'm gonna offer that to them as well. And I currently have smoke detectors being installed again from Red Cross. It's a limited supply. Remember that we just don't hand out the detectors. We actually installed them and thought it would work because that is part of a tracking measure that Red Cross uses for their grant. And when we run out, we'll actually get some more as well. And so we've got.
Any questions for Chief Barber? Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
All right, moving on. We're up to second reading, ordinance eighty-two dash twenty-two.
An ordinance approving temporary appropriations from January first, two thousand twenty-three to March thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three.
Okay. Any council discussion on said matter? Motion to adopt. So moved.
Mr. Dumpy?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes. Moving on to first reading ordinances. Ordinance eighty-five dash twenty-two, need someone to introduce it, please.
Introduce, thank you.
An ordinance approving wastewater treatment plant phase two, change order four for the Nelsonville Regional Collection System Project and declaring an emergency. Whereas the city of Nelsonville has entered into a contract for phase two wastewater treatment plant, whereas additional changes to the contract are recommended in order to complete the contract. And whereas this will be change order four for this project. Whereas the change order will increase the contract price by fifty-seven thousand nine hundred and twenty-two dollars and sixty-four cents and is summarized as attached in exhibit one. Now therefore be ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio as follows. The city of Nelsonville hereby approves change order four for the phase two wastewater treatment plant contract as described in exhibit one attached heretofore and incorporated into this ordinance as if rewritten fully within. The contract price will be increased by a sum of fifty-six thousand nine hundred and twenty-two dollars and sixty-four cents. The change is necessary to, one, add lights on the front of the headquarters building, not noted on electrical drawings per attached Kirk Brothers Company Incorporated, change order request number ten. Two, reimburse Kirk Brothers for rocket excavation along the northern edge of the Nelsonville site to install sewer pipe per attached Kirk Brothers change order request number twelve. Three, to additionally compensate Kirk Brothers to modify the blower generator pad and move the blower south of the electrical building per attached Kirk Brothers change order request number fourteen. City manager Scott Frank shall have the authority to enter into, accept and or authorize to contract change order for phase two wastewater treatment plant contract as shown in exhibit one. This ordinance is being passed as an emergency measure pursuant to O R C seven thirty-one point thirty, article four, section four point zero nine through four point one one, as an emergency in the operation of the city government and is necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, health, safety, morals or welfare of the city and this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon its adoption. duly enacted by council on first reading under suspension of the rules the twelfth day of December, two thousand twenty-two.
Move to suspend. Any council discussion?
I'll second Mr. Trump's motion.
Yep.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Coman?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Dumpy?
Yes.
The move to adopt. Second.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Coman?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Dumpy?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes. Ordinance eighty-six dash twenty-two, need someone to introduce it, please. I will. Thank you.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a radio tower site lease agreement with the county of Athens for use of the nine one one power and declaring an emergency. Whereas the city of Nelsonville needs to renew or enter into a radio tower site lease agreement with the county of Athens for use of the nine one one tower, whereas the agreement is attached as exhibit one. Now therefore be ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio as follows. The city manager is hereby authorized to sign and enter into the radio tower site lease agreement with the county of Athens for use of the nine one one power attached and incorporated by reference to this ordinance as exhibit one, as if fully rewritten herein. This ordinance is being passed as an emergency measure pursuant to O R C seven thirty-one point thirty, article four, sections four point zero nine through four point one one, as an emergency in the operation of the city government and is necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, health, safety, morals or welfare of the city and this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon its adoption. duly enacted by council on first reading under suspension of the rules the twelfth day of December, two thousand twenty-two.
Any council discussion on said matter? Motion to suspend. So moved. Second.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Coman?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Dumpy?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes. Motion to adopt. So moved. Second. For your contribution, please.
Mr. Coman?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Dumpy?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes. All right. Ordinance eighty-seven dash twenty-two, need someone to introduce it, please. I will. Thank you.
And ordinance rescinding ordinance eighty-six dash twenty and declaring ordinance eighty-six dash twenty null and void and removing the position of in-house tier one I P specialist and declaring it an emergency. Whereas the city of Nelsonville has previously created the position of an in-house tier one I P specialist in ordinance eighty-six dash twenty. Whereas the city of Nelsonville desires to remove the position of in-house tier one I P specialist previously created in order of eighty-six dash twenty in its entirety. Now therefore be ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio as follows. The city of Nelsonville shall hereby no longer maintain the position of in-house tier one I P specialist created in ordinance eighty-six dash twenty. Ordinance eighty-six dash twenty is hereby rescinded and shall be null and void. This ordinance is being passed as an emergency measure pursuant to O R C seven thirty-one point thirty, article four, section four point zero nine through ten point one one, as an emergency in the operation of the city government and is necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, health, safety, morals or welfare of the city and this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon its adoption. duly enacted by council on first reading under suspension of the rules the twelfth day of December, two thousand twenty-two.
Any, is council discussion on said matter? Motion to suspend. So moved. Second.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Dumpy?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Coman?
Yeah. Motion to adopt. So moved. Thank.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Dumpy?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Coman?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes. Ordinance eighty-eight dash twenty-two, need someone to introduce it, please. I will. Thank you.
And ordinance authorizing the city manager to hire an external I P specialist on a month-to-month basis beginning January first, two thousand twenty-three and declaring an emergency. Whereas the city of Nelsonville would like to hire an external I P specialist on a month-to-month basis beginning January first, two thousand twenty-three. Whereas the I P specialists shall not be paid more than eight thousand one hundred and ninety dollars annually despite being hired on a month-to-month basis. Now therefore be ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio as follows. The city manager is hereby authorized to hire an I T, external I T specialist on a month-to-month basis beginning January first, two thousand twenty-three. The I T specialist shall not be paid more than eight thousand one hundred and ninety dollars annually despite being hired on a month-to-month basis. This ordinance is being cast as an emergency measure pursuant to O R C seven thirty-one point thirty, article four, section four point zero nine through four point one one, as an emergency in the operation of the city government and is necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, health, safety, morals or welfare of the city. And this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon its adoption. duly enacted by council on first reading under suspension of the rules the twelfth day of December, two thousand twenty-two.
Any council discussion on said matter?
Yes, I have a question. Is there I T work that needs done every month?
Yes. It just fluctuates every day. So we have multiple layers of I T work. So Freedom Links provides, they take care of all the fiber, the phones and should call it tier two support. And then this is just the in-house stuff. When the, whenever your computer doesn't connect or if you're having a problem with your in-house computer or the printers, that stuff. So it fluctuates every day, maybe nothing for a couple days and then it may be four or five things.
Okay. So if we get to the tenth month of the year and this eight thousand one hundred and ninety dollars is used up, where do we go from there?
Well, the plan is to pay five hundred a month, which is less than what we're paying now. Currently, we're paying six hundred and thirty. Is that right, Mr. Sam?
Three fifteen bi-weekly.
Three fifteen bi-weekly. So the current plan is to pay less, but should for whatever reason you decide not to continue working with us, I didn't want to have to come back to council and change it. That's more ourself.
Thank you.
Okay. Motion to suspend. So moved. Second.
Mr. Dumpy?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Coman?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes. Motion to adopt. Second.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Coman?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Dumpy?
Yes. Okay, that's the end of the legislation. We're on to the city manager's report. Scott, for yours.
All right, thank you, everyone. First thing, I want to thank Judy Smith for the declarations. I saw she came in, she did a tree when you came in, she did a tree here. So she did a fantastic job, that's very festive. And she also did the one walking in by my office, and I believe you, do you have one in your walk-in as well? Not yet, I'm sure there will be. She, she stayed here after quitting time and left just right before the meeting started, so she did a fantastic job. Also, with that said, Mr. Steve Coaches, he retires a week from tomorrow after eleven years with the city, so that's gonna, we're gonna have a going away luncheon for him. And sad to see him go, but excited for him as well. So he's off to retired life. I don't think it'll slow him down any, anybody knows Steve, he doesn't, he doesn't slow down. Business. So we got our S A O P from our special meeting, that was all turned in, so that was for the one point four, excuse me, million dollar, uh, streetlight sidewalk project down Washington Street. So I believe she said two weeks is what they anticipate. So I will confirm that. I should have confirmed that beforehand as I was getting all my other notes here ready to go. But I believe they expect an answer back from the state within two weeks and or I believe that was the hope. And then from there, hopefully we get it. And the engineer is off to the races because we got ninety days to breaking ground. So, and just for everybody in the crowd. Yes, ma'am.
Is that West Andes, Washington?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
So what that will be is, so for everybody at home, what that would be, so from Stewart's Opera House to Jefferson Street, that'll be the double streetlights like that's currently on the square now, all the way down and that'll be new sidewalks, all the way down, ADA compliant sidewalks. And then going from the other way, going toward uh, Savings Hardware. Going toward Savings Hardware. So from where they ended before, at that alleyway there in front of the S A O P building, that would be the double streetlights like those there before cleared to the post office and the library. That would be the new sidewalks with the stamped concrete brick inlet with the double lights. And then from Savings Hardware cleared to the end where Furt Hack used to be.
The music building.
The music building would be new sidewalks and new decorative streetlights with single globe. So, and then if for some reason it doesn't get approved, then I plan on resubmitting it for round two and then also resubmitting, or submitting Columbus Street for the same end to end and then Fayette Street just for the lights. Excuse me, because Fayette Street's already approved for sidewalks as part of our safety corridor that's been approved for the O-Doc grant they'll talk about in a minute. So that's part of the twenty twenty-five, O-Doc fiscal year twenty twenty-five project, which will be summer of twenty twenty-four. So that'll be new sidewalks from the square that aren't already new. So there's not gonna be digging out already new ones, but it goes from the square to Kroger that, replacing the sidewalks that haven't already been, going down Fayette Street, take a right on Jefferson and then down Chestnut Street, clear to Kroger. So that's the ones that haven't already been replaced. None of the ADA compliant crosswalks. And then that also includes a couple of the streets going over to the senior senior, the senior, with the senior center, but also the senior housing next to
From the family, next to Family Dollar.
Uh huh. And then that includes crosswalks, crossing Canal Street, that's after the Canal Street project gets done, which I guess that's a good segue. The Canal Street project, that's at the same time, that's where Canal Street will get redone from Roundabout to six ninety-one. And then from Sonic up over the hill to Borough Boulevard. But back to the safety corridor that includes a couple bus stops and a couple crosswalks as well.
Any plans to put a sidewalk from East Franklin to Jefferson, from East Franklin down to Washington? You know, that one section that isn't, doesn't have a sidewalk on it?
Um, not, I'm, I'm, no.
Are you kind of familiar with what I'm talking about? About where the old, where the old Catholic church was?
The one way, right there on the corner.
Yeah, that one-way section.
No, but I'm happy to look at it.
Yeah, because people do walk there, but there's not a sidewalk on that one, on that one side.
I'm happy to look at it. Uh, definitely not opposed to looking at all the sidewalk. I'm, I want to replace as many sidewalks and curbs as I can. They're a hot mess. And then also, we just found out last Tuesday, so this is another huge win because it's gonna happen at the same time. So it'll happen in the summer of twenty twenty-four, is another one point two five million dollar street project just got approved. So Franklin Street, not your end, I'm sorry, Fork Street to the hospital. Don't worry, we should have enough city money to do your end too. But Franklin Street, Fork Street, Pleasant View, Short Street, Conner, John, Frederick, Mount is all getting paved.
That definitely needs to be paved, yeah.
So all that's getting paved in twenty twenty-four. So that's a little over five million dollars in paving and sidewalks in twenty twenty-four. So we're gonna make a sign and put a map up and, you know, like one of those little goal boards you have sellers at work and right after the first of the year, put it out there so you guys can see where it's at. I mean, it's two years out, I get that. It'll be a year out if we do it after the first of the year. But, and then would like to start working on a, a big Poplar Street project which digs it all the way down and then fixes the waterline because Poplar Street were like twenty twenty-six. Because it's gonna take multiple grants to do it. It's not one of those grind and re-dos. It's a dig it clear to the dirt redo, so that'd be working with you, but there's multiple grant opportunities. But it's that many years out that we have to do that. So, but that's
Just to touch real quick on stuff, when you're talking about digging it down because it's been built up so many years, not one drain on Poplar Street works.
No. How high is it built up about this high? The stormwater goes over top of it, creates an airlock and the drains don't work correctly. And there's not much, so we had the guys go down there and like cut the asphalt in front of it to make the gap bigger, trying to have some sort of solution, but the road's taller than the curb and when they cut it for a waterline, there's between the bricks and the asphalt, is that about right, Jason? To get down to dirt. So it's just beyond repair at this point. Just needs to dig it up and start over, but curves and all. So that's where we're at. So that's exciting news for twenty twenty-four. I know it's kind of far away. But, and then I know we talked about for twenty-three. Soon as they get done with the waterline, which brings the segways in before we, I know we talked about paving Monroe Street because they're getting ready to finish up the sewer through there.